Anna Olsen, Treasurer, Bill Thompson, Director, and Rebecca Feinie, Director. These six people constitute the School Board of the District of Cannon Falls Area Schools. Joining us tonight are our consultants that we've been working with on this project, ISG Architects, Cross Anderson Construction, and Ellers Financial. And if we do have specific questions, we may ask some of them to answer those specific questions as we go throughout tonight's presentation. Our plan is to go through this presentation and then stop after information on each question to see if there are questions from the audience. If you do have questions from the audience, especially online, please unmute at that time and ask questions. We will provide wait time for the questions to happen. So please unmute and go ahead and introduce yourself and please ask your questions. So to begin with, the question is, how did we get to a spot where we are going out for an election on May 11? And so some simple history here and kind of the process that the district has gone through over really the past year and a half to two years. And I keep fiddling with this and this isn't working. So, all right. In 2015 to 2019, the district made a commitment to fund one-to-one technology and 50% of an indoor air quality project improvements within the district. And this was mainly done out of their undesignated fund balance, which basically is their savings account. At the time, the district had a healthy fund balance and decided that these were good projects that they wanted to fund. And obviously, those still hold true today as the one-to-one technology initiative is very important to the district, especially in the middle of a pandemic. And also, the 50% of the indoor air quality improvements helps learning environments for children. In the fall of 2019, the undesignated fund balance dropped to 2% of the overall budget. The district policy states that we should be within 8% to 12% of the district fund balance. So the question came up, do we want to change our fund balance policy to match what our fund balance is? Or do we need to make cuts and square our budget away more? The decision at the time was to cut in a neighborhood of just over $300,000 of the $700,000 that we cut to square our budget. Those cuts at the time were a lot of staff that affected some programming here in the district. And those weren't cuts that were taken very lightly at the time. Around that time also, the district went through a strategic planning process involving stakeholders from the community, including parents, staff members, other community members, business owners, et cetera. Out of that staff or out of that stakeholder meeting throughout the fall of 2019, a list of five strategic priorities were finalized and approved by the board. The five priorities were to develop and implement a comprehensive communication plan, increase the fund balance to ensure that the district is financially stable and within board policy, develop a long-range facility plan and budget that includes a maintenance program, develop a safety plan that includes mental wellness and secure facilities, and finally, develop collaborative career and college readiness opportunities for our children. Obviously, the two pathways that fit with what we are currently doing is to increase our fund balance to ensure that the district is financially stable, within board policy, and developing a long-range facility plan and budget that includes a maintenance program. With that being said, the Facilities Committee undertook searching for a firm to conduct a facilities study, not only to find out what was needed in the district, but also to confirm what administration had already started looking at as far as needs. And this took place in the summer of 2020 with ISG Architects. From that assessment, there were $20 million in deficiencies that were noted in the district. And a priority list was created out of that facility assessment. From there, administration and the Facilities Committee went to work to prioritize what we needed to do and how we are going to address those items. In the fall of 2020, which would be last October, November timeframe, the district sent out a community-wide survey to determine their priorities and the tax tolerance if needed. The priorities were from the facilities assessment. We were looking for help to determining what should be prioritized when looking at our facilities. With the community survey in hand and those results along with the tax tolerance of the district, the School Board on February 8 reduced the scope of the project from $20 million down to about 12.7 overall and approved a resolution for us to move forward with the election on May 11. Obviously, we have an election date coming up here on May 11, which is for the levy and bond information. If it passes or if any part of it passes, from May of 2021 to the fall of 2022 will be design, implementation, and construction. On the ballot, this will be the first question that you will see. The first question deals with the approval of the capital project levy authorization. The question reads, shall the capital project levy authorization proposed by the Board of Independent School District Number 252, Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, be approved? By voting yes on this ballot, you are voting for a property tax increase. So what does that look like? The capital project levy would be $400,000 for 10 years. The $400,000 would adequately fund what we currently have in place for hardware, software, devices, staffing, and other areas of technology that fit into how we implement our one-to-one program and other technology in the district. It would provide sufficient infrastructure and staff development also so that additional cuts are not required to our general fund to help stop the money coming out of our undesignated fund. In return, the undesignated fund will start rising again to meet the goal of the policy of the district between 8% to 12%. Obviously, we talked a little bit earlier about what happened between 2015 and 19 with the implementation and also the cuts that happened initially to try to meet the deficit of that. Obviously, there's $400,000 worth of difference between the cuts that were implemented and the deficit that were showing in the books. This will help balance out that budget. If the ballot question does not pass, the district will be required to make additional cuts to help balance our budget. Some people have asked, what do those cuts look like? The cuts could be a combination of anything from technology to programs to staffing to other line item budget pieces also. They could be in one area, they could be in multiple areas. The money that is being asked for for the capital projects levy would help to avoid those additional cuts. I think at this time, we want to pause and see if there are any comments from the board or any questions from our online people.
I was hoping to get each question to have their own Q and A behind it. And if there was a reason at the end of question four, we needed to go back to any single one, we could do that. But if we keep this question and answer per question, I think it would be a lot better than we don't jump around. Jeff, what you're saying here is, we're going to add a $400,000 and essentially, we move, we've been paying for that out of the general fund on technology. Now that we earmark $400,000 for our technology, that would free more up in our general fund and back to it and increase our fund balance.
It would go back to helping us meet our revenues that we're currently getting because right now, we're exceeding our revenues and taking the dollars out of our undesignated fund, which is in a sense, our savings account, our rainy day fund, if you will.
Does anyone have any questions first from the board that they'd like to discuss and Rebecca as well?
Bob, can you speak a little bit more directly into the microphone?
Yeah, I'll be better.
People are having a little bit harder time to hear.
When I set it down, it makes noise, so I try to hide it. Board members that are visiting with us online, do you have any questions or anything? No? In attendance, do you have any? I know we've gone through this before, but.
No questions.
Okay. How about participants that are here online listening to what we have to say? Does anyone in the general public have any questions? Having heard none, I think we move on to question two. Okay?
All right, moving on to question two. Question two reads, approval of school building bonds. Shall the Board of Independent School District Number 252, Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, be authorized to issue general obligations, school building bonds in an amount not to exceed $10,450,000 for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. What does that mean? In question two, the biggest pieces of question two is to improve and renovate our career and tech ed space, which hasn't been touched in over 60 years. The renovation would allow for more efficiencies in that space. We will not be expanding that space, but we will be better utilizing that space. As many of you know, the career and tech ed areas are becoming a hotbed of job activities out in the quote-unquote real world. We need to keep pace with preparing our students for those expectations of companies, not only in the Cannon Falls area, but for around the world as well. Renovations include or are not limited to ventilation in these areas with welding fumes and gas fumes in that area, renovation of our electrical and gas lines in that area, better use of space to add more machines, more modern machines in this area. I think there's a lot of opportunities with local companies in the area to partner with them and to better utilize those partnerships with better efficient spaces. The second part of this or the second big part of this question revolves around completing the indoor air quality project that was started five years ago or so. This mainly would affect the academic classroom areas in the high school and finishing off that project and providing a good learning environment for the kids in the middle school and high school wings of this building, which were in the middle school, high school currently. For those of you that don't know what building we're in, I got to remember that. In this slide, it talks about the 60-year-old CTE spaces and then the 50% area that was that needs to be completed in the 1962 high school piece. Other areas of this question that will be addressed include replacing building exterior deficiencies at roofing sections in this building, which is the high school and at the CCC, caulking exterior walls or tuck pointing them, and addressing site drainage deficiencies to move water away from building foundations and walls to prevent further damage. Now, this is going to happen both here at the middle school, high school, and also at the elementary school. Currently, about half of our roof sections drain into our courtyard without any other drainage once it gets there. And so we create a swimming pool effect. For those of you that have been here long enough, you've probably seen the media center flood a couple of different times, which having water in your own house is not a good thing. And so that water will be redirected out and trees that are getting of age that need to be taken down before the kinds of further damage will happen as well. At the elementary, most of the site drainage issues are on the backside of the elementary, causing water to flow toward the building. That will be addressed as well. Any questions for question number two?
I wonder if Bob, please, use my mic. I wonder if Dave Peterson is able to give us any perspective as far as being our building maintenance engineer, building maintenance person? Dave? This is our largest single part of our request.
I'm having trouble hearing Bob, but I can hear you.
Okay, so Bob, what was your question today?
You know, I questioned where you came up with these items as our most necessary items. And I think our two facility people are online here, but you must have facility meetings to come to the conclusion about these are our most pressing needs.
Yeah, Dave, can you hear me?
Yep.
Could you hear Bob's question?
I did not. I struggled hearing that.
Okay, are we getting some feedback? The general question is, how did we arrive at some of these items here? Is this something that you came up with or was there a process that was gone through to meet these needs?
Well, everything that we've done since I've been there, there's been a process. There's been outside contractors, there's been other companies doing analysis of what needs to be done in the buildings. And then, of course, it goes through the Facilities Committee, which then in turn goes to the board for approval. So everything we've done has gone through the, you know, the proper channels and the progression it needs to go through. Some of the things that we're talking about here are just things that happen over time. The drainage, the erosion of the back of the elementary, the age of the trees in the courtyard, things like that. You know, they're just things that eventually happen and takes a little time and they just need to be taken care of. So they're just really poking their heads right now and they need attention and we, you know, we got to come up with a plan to take care of it before it gets even more costly.
The biggest thing is when, at least I arrived, we started a process of coming up with a list of priority of needs in the district facility-wise and then also bringing in ISG to give their perspective and a lot of their perspective matched what we were seeing as well from that conversation and then having those conversations in the Facility Committee as well.
Would there be anyone else on the board who's to direct a question? Did I see that? Maybe I'm not connected to Rebecca. Can I see that on there? Rebecca or Anna?
Rebecca's commenting that she still can't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you, Rebecca. I thought it was only me.
A microphone and Bob usually work well together.
Bob, you kind of sound like the teacher of peanuts all week here. It's just, I know you're talking, but it's just mumbles.
Anna, can you hear me okay? Do either one of you have anything to add to the facility discussion?
I can rephrase that.
Sure.
Rebecca and Anna, do either of you have anything to add to that facility discussion being on the committee?
Does anyone that is online currently have any questions for Jeff or for Dave or for Rebecca?
Do we have any questions from online participants at this time on question two?
Hello, do you want to listen to this?
Hello, I was thinking about the church.
Okay, if you don't have questions, please use your Zoom. Thank you.
I have a question. On the second part, did I do that internal air quality?
Indoor air quality. Yeah. Indoor air quality. Yep.
And this might be an obvious answer, but I was just wondering why only 50% of that was done in 2015? And it was just the CTE spaces that did not give the IQ improvements of that impact? Is that just because of the diversity and the cost of that?
And I think Dave understands the history of that 50%, Dave, about why we only did 2% of that.
Yeah, I didn't hear the question, but yeah, I hear you, Jeff. The 50%, the part that we didn't do is primarily the high school wing and the middle school wing. And with the analysis we did for indoor air quality through our health and safety, we addressed the most pressing issues first and the equipment that was the most outdated. That was our priority. The areas that we want to take care of now, you know, back when we did the project, they were probably at about 50% lifespan. So we really had to think about exactly how we want to spend the funds we had available in the best way. With having half life still left in those units, we just thought that we would use the funds in other directions such as roofing and other HVAC issues that we had. So we're at the point now where we really need to address these univents in these classrooms just to make, you know, those rooms a little more comfortable and to function properly. And we don't want to get to the point where we're in a panic mode. We'd like to address these things in a timely fashion so we can stay on top of it and be more preventative compared to panicking and having an issue that we need to deal with immediately. So really just trying to be preventative, but at the same time, trying to be smart. And that's why we didn't do. that's why we didn't do the things we did five years ago as we still had life in these units.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. So just so that I understand, maybe a clarification, there was some financial, financially making sure that we were spending wisely our dollars and being financially prudent and making sure that we didn't replace things that didn't need to be replaced at the time. Is that correct, Dave?
That's exactly what we did. That's the perfect wording for it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So is this different or did we give it grants or did some air quality improvement situation to be so good? Does this difference matter? Or is it?
The COVID dollars that we got last fall were part from the federal government, and we could use them in many different facets. And one of the ways that we did was we added bipolar ionization to our air handling units. And so that's a little bit different than what we're looking to do here. That was just an add-on piece to what we currently have to make sure that it was killing all sorts of things, germs and pollen and everything else that would come through the building.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from either online or board members? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on. Question number three is for approval of school building bonds for gymnasiums and outdoor athletics. If school district question two is approved, meaning that question three and question four cannot happen unless question number two is approved, shall the Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota be authorized to issue general obligation building bond in an amount not to exceed 1.7, 1.575 million for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to renovations and updates to the district's gymnasiums and outdoor athletic facilities and sites? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. So what does question three look like from a building bond referendum? The biggest piece here is improving gymnasium deficiencies both in the middle school and high, or middle school, high school, and elementary buildings and our, and our outdoor athletic stadium. In the middle school, high school, the biggest piece is to replace the bleachers that are there that are 20-plus years old and are original to that gym. The manufacturer of those bleachers is not in business anymore, and we cannot get parts anymore for that. And so if those bleachers come out one day, they may not go back in, is the bottom line, which would be bad. And if we're replacing bleachers, the floor will get damaged as part of that process, and we will need to refurbish the floor once it is done. Before we get to the outdoor athletic stadium, I do want to talk about the elementary gymnasium. There was moisture damage from, Dave, was that from a roof leak? Or what was that from? I'm guessing it was from a roof leak?
It was a combination of a roof leak, and then at the time, we also didn't have any dehumidification in that building, which since then we've taken care of with the last project. So with adding that, that, you know, that definitely helped the situation.
Sure, sure. That wood floor rises and falls, causing bumps in the floor throughout the year depending on when the timing of the year is, I guess. And so that floor does need to be replaced because that is a safety issue within the elementary gym because they do use that throughout the day for FIAE. The outdoor athletic stadium, we would love to regrade the field that is in the outdoor athletic stadium behind the middle school, high school. Currently, it has a crown on the surface that is too high for safe use. The ground is very hard, especially from fall, because of the lack of an irrigation system there. The bond would replace the defective irrigation system and refurbish the surface of the track. Now, the track surfaces need to be refurbished every seven or eight years, and we are a couple of years behind on that simply because of needing to prioritize other items. The final thing that would take place during this piece here would be the providing of the lighting on that stadium field that currently does not exist to extend the usage of that area into a longer period of the day. So that covers the 1.575 million that is being asked for in question number three. At this point, are there any questions from board members or from anybody online?
I wonder if again, I wonder if again if Dave could speak to the bleacher situation that we have here. You did a nice job here, but just from a practical day-to-day standpoint, it sounds pretty rugged if there are no available parts. It doesn't seem like that those bleachers are that old. Twenty years goes by fairly quickly, and I'm sure they must be that age.
Dave, I don't know if you heard Bob at all, but can you speak to the bleachers in the middle school, high school? The condition that they're in, and the age, I guess?
Yeah, the bleachers are original with the gym, and the condition is, you know, they've taken some abuse. It's a gymnasium. There's a lot of activity in there. We did have a stockpile of replacement parts that we've used the last several years. We're to the point now where we're really out of any available parts, and to be able to continue to replace anything from cracked seats, anything that's wrong in the rows, we'd actually have to start eliminating rows to take those parts to then refurbish the rows below, which of course now we start decreasing our capacity and how many people can be in the gym. The parts that you can see are probably the parts that are in the worst shape, the bearings, the motors, everything underneath the bleachers. Me and my staff have had to band-aid those together the last few years. We have had a couple situations where we were concerned about them getting back in, and it's just something where the amount of use that they get and the condition that they're in is going to come to a head at a certain point. When that is, I guess no one can really tell.
I would like to read to comment on the outdoor field, the outdoor facility, meaning the track and the, and the football field back there. We seem to have gotten by without it for a long period in time, and has it created any issues as far as scheduling or that type of thing that we should be all aware of as far as why we need that field?
Read. Hi, everybody. Good evening. I did not hear everything that Bob said. I heard, I heard the part about scheduling at the end, but I did not hear the beginning part.
Okay. To the usage of the field and track in the back of the school, and what that field means to us, and any other thoughts that you may have on that?
Absolutely. The stadium field, we're currently using that as a varsity practice football field. Our lower level, our lower level football teams have played on that. The crown is too high to allow for softball to play on that surface. Presently, I have concerns with the surface. Obviously, we've already addressed about how hard it is in the fall. We don't have any, any grass penetrating through that soil, especially without irrigation. So I have concerns about safety and the absorption that we would have here for practice, let alone our lower level teams playing on that field. Certainly, the track is using that facility during the springtime and any type of, you know, normal year, we certainly like to see some CFY usage get on that, on that field as well. Currently, I have not seen any of our educational programming or PE teams, I've not, or classes, I've not seen them on that surface this year. I've seen them out on the softball complex, playing some football and other opportunities within the classroom. But in regards to the scheduling, if we recall back to the first soccer match, if you will, we were scheduled to host Stewartville, and that was when the heat advisory came in, and I realized that we're always going to have heat advisories in the first parts of the fall, first part of the season. But we had to move the game to switch locations and go to Stewartville because we could not start at a later time due to not having lights. So the lights on that stadium are just as important and imperative to our programming as that excavating and irrigation is.
Any questions from the board members on these, or any questions virtually from the Zoom people for question three? Okay, moving on. Question number four, approval of school building bonds for artificial turf. This one also is dependent on question number two and question three, so if question two and three do not pass, then question four is immaterial. So question two and question three have to pass before you can answer question number four. If school district questions two and three are approved, shall the Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota be authorized to issue general obligation school building bond in an amount not to exceed $685,000 for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to acquisition and installation of artificial turf to the district's stadium field? By voting yes on this ballot, you are voting for a property tax increase. So that is how question number four will read. So the question becomes, why are we asking a specific question about turf? And the simple answer is, this is the cheapest time that you are going to be able to add turf. That is what the district wishes to do at this time because the groundwork is already being done to that area of the outdoor stadium. Now, there's benefits to adding the artificial turf as well. We talked about the benefits of adding lighting to extend the day. The biggest benefit of adding turf is that you get more use and more availability out of that area as you go throughout the year because you don't have to worry about letting a field dry before you can get onto it for such items as outdoor FIAE or athletic practices or any other type of learning that takes place outside there, or even community's activities at night if you extend the time into the evening for youth activities. So there is a big benefit to adding the artificial turf. And so I guess part of this question here is if the community is interested in adding turf at any time, this would be the cheapest time to do it. And so the question is asked at this time of the community. Any questions about turf? From board members, or do you have questions you want to read, or anybody to talk more about that?
I have a question. What is the, what is the rate of the term? How many years does that go out last before it has to be replaced?
I think it's a little bit different. I don't know. Is this not?
Sure. The question is asked, what is the longevity of the artificial turf before it is replaced? Everything that I have read is that it has a 10-year lifespan, and depending on the usage and the care of it, it could be extended out sometimes to 12 years before it would need to be replaced.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yep. It'd be 10 years lifespan, and it could be up to 12 years.
And it doesn't cost as much to replace? Does it put it in that category?
It does not cost as much to replace. You are correct. There's, it's a little bit less than what it shows as of right now. Obviously, if you, if you put in SOD, let's say, right now and five years from now, you want to come back and add turf, you won't be able to get it for the $685,000. You'd have to redo the groundwork again to make it match what is required for turf. If you're replacing the turf that you already have on there, I believe the cost is cheaper. Is that correct, Kevin? And Kevin is shaking his head yes. Do we have any questions from online about turf? No?
There's a question.
Yep.
Not really a question, but maybe an explanation of why one question passed, that's the word the next question to be?
Considered? Yes.
Question four, perhaps it based on three makes complete sense because it's tied into that three versus two.
The question is, why is four dependent on three and two, and why is question three dependent on question two? The quick answer to that is that we are an academic institution, and we want to make sure that we are taking care of our academic spaces and the overall health of all of our facilities to begin with. To me, it doesn't make sense to pass the improvements to our activity facilities, although they are needed, without taking care of our academic and the rest of our building's health along the way. That is why we tie them up the way we did, so that two would need to pass before we consider the activity increases, or renovation, we should say. Does that answer the question, Bill?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, so there's a question for that.
Oh. So in reference to the essential fixes needed to be done to the ventilation and the roof at the middle school, high school building, question two, where will the money come from to do the fixes if that question on the referendum does not pass? And maybe Josh can come up with this, but my initial thought was we would need to prioritize and look at the overall cost of those fixes and then start planning out how we would take that out of our yearly LTFM dollars, which currently, the first 50% of the project came out of our LTFM dollars and took up about what percentage, Josh, of our LTFM?
Majority. We're pretty much tied up in LTFM, Mark, it's 411.
Can you maybe? Yeah, I got a microphone. Here's Josh's explanation.
Sure. So the kind of short answer to if the referendum does not pass, where do funds come to fix the things that are required to fix? Biggest issue is obviously being roof and drainage. With the passage of our last project, the large portion of our LTFM and operating capital funds are now tied up into paying off that $11 million project, all indoor air quality and health and safety items. So there is going to be some serious prioritization of budgets and funds on how we're going to take care of those items. You know, we will be able to have a plan in place right now. We do have a long-term plan for some LTFM items, but in order to cover six-figure costs, which these would run into, it would take potentially several years of planning and pre- um, it would take potentially several years of planning and prioritization to get those done. Uh, realistically, to pay off, uh, you know, the $10 million question A and question two, that really does take a bond, uh, to get all those projects completed.
And, and that's a good point. Uh, in a nutshell, what we'd be doing would be looking to pay off that second question. And when we're looking at the amount of LTFM that we have, uh, available to us from year to year, uh, it, it would take us quite a few years to get that accomplished, to save that amount up, uh, to be there. And so, a- again, Josh had mentioned that a lot of the first 50% of that IEQ is being tied up in our current LTFM, and so that, those dollars aren't available. But what we have remaining, we would need to, uh, prioritize and move forward best that we can to do those fixes. Any questions before we move on? Alright, so why now? Uh, the biggest thing is, uh, we, we do have the community support as communicated through the survey from this past fall to keep moving forward and ask these questions, uh, to get that support. Currently, as everybody knows, hopefully everybody knows, there is historically low interest rates for borrowing money, and this is a good time to be borrowing money if there are needs. There's a favorable construction market. Uh, plenty of construction companies are looking for work. They're hungry for work as companies are scrambling to figure out how they're gonna meet their capital needs. And finally, a referendum, this referendum is a result of our strategic plan as we talked about earlier in the presentation. Tax impact. So what is this gonna cost us? If you go to our website, there are more specific ways to look at your specific situation, but for tonight's discussion, we're gonna use the average residential homestead cost in Cannon Falls, which is $225,000. This house garage and one-acre residential homestead, $225,000, is broken down on this slide, question by question, for you to see the potential tax impact. Obviously, if you have a $450,000 house, you would simply double these numbers, or pro-rate out whatever the, the, uh, value of your house is. It should be, get you, it should get you close. However, I do encourage you to visit our school's website in the referendum part, which is right on the front page. There is a tax calculator on there. If you have a little bit more complicated, um, property problem to figure out, I would encourage you to call Ellers Financial, and their phone number is on the tax calculator website as well, and they will be more than happy to help you. So in this example, $225,000 house, if question one passes, that is a $66 increase per year to your school property taxes. Question number two, question number two passes, that is an additional $50 increase to your property taxes. Now, questions two, three, and four are tied together, if you remember that conversation. Question one is independent, meaning if question one fails, question two could still pass, three, and then four. Question one could pass, and then question two, three, and four could fail. Just so that everybody's clear on that, question one is independent, and this is the tech levy question that we were discussing. So continuing on down and across this, uh, example of $225,000, question two is a $50 increase, question three is a $7 increase. That is the, uh, indoor and outdoor, educational and activity areas. And then question number four here is a $3 increase per year for turf, totaling $126 per year, or roughly $10 a month on a $225,000 house. Now, the second part of this is the Minnesota Residential Property Tax Refund. There are tax relief measures that the state has built in. And if I get way off base here, either Jeff Ellers from, or Jeff Sealy from Ellers, or Tony Schellander from KAG can put me back into the square here. But the idea is, is that there are refunds available for people that qualify, and there are qualification areas set up here and examples that we will go through here in just a little bit. But there are two different types of tax relief measures, the regular residential property tax refund, which is an annual refund for eligible households, or the special residential property tax refund. The example that we used just above was a $225,000 house, which is the average house price in Cannon Falls School District. If you have an annual household income of $80,000, and you have a $225,000 house, if all four questions pass, which we talked about above, would be $126 a year. With the regular property tax refund, you would subtract off $76 a year, and then that would equal a payment of a $50 increase per year in your taxes, or $4 a month as opposed to the $10 a month. Now, obviously, this is something that you would need to be qualified for, and you would need to fill out the paperwork on, uh, for this to happen. So it's important if you do meet those qualifications, and this does pass, that you make sure that you take advantage of that. Any questions on the tax impact or the residential property tax refund pieces before we move on? Anything online? Alright, moving on. So what does this look like for tax impact versus what's going on in other area schools? So what is our total levy per ADM? ADM is average daily membership, which is the number of students that we have. So how much are we paying or getting per ADM through our tax levy compared to other school districts? So how do we compare with what's going on in the area? Currently, the $3,519 is our total levy per ADM currently. If all four questions pass, that would raise by $685 per ADM, and move us toward the middle of this group here, which are the districts in the surrounding area. You can see Randolph, Lake City, Hastings, Goodhue, Kenyon, Red Wing, Zimbrota, and Northfield. It would put us slightly above the group average, and then here is the state average, which the group is already below the state average in this area. So what does that mean for your total school property taxes on that $225,000 average house compared using the same school districts? Here's where we currently are compared to other school districts in the area. And somehow this rounded up to 127 instead of 126 on that $225,000 house. But again, that would put us over into the middle of the pack again, still under the group average, and then slightly over the state average of what the property taxes would be. And so we're still hitting that middle point of the area. We're not going all the way up to the top, and we're still not down at the bottom here as far as what we're spending for property taxes for the school district. Any questions on property taxes? Alright, so we reached the part where if somebody has a statement that they would like to make, both in person or, uh, online, now would be a time to do it. Or if you have any questions that have come up that, of an area that we've already passed, this could be a good time to go back and address those questions. And our only person in attendance here, I do not see him here anymore. So we're to virtual questions. If we have any. Okay, hearing done, um, first of all, I wanna remind people that there is obviously information that was sent out to you from the district and via the district brochure. Uh, there is a lot more information online at our school website, cannonfallschool.com. On the very front page, you will see a levy, um, referendum website picture. Click on that, and that will take you to our levy referendum information page. As usual, please feel free to call the district, email the district, any questions that you may have. We'd be happy to answer those questions, and try to get the specific answer that you have and that you need prior to voting on May 11th.
Jeff, is there a question about the absentee voting?
Yes.
So in the literature, it said it will begin authority, starting from the first place.
Yep. The absentee voting has started.
So, just go to the district office and then mail it there, or take the home term in the back. How does that work?
And Josh is one of the election judges. I'm not an election judge, so I should probably not comment on that. If you give him a second to come up here, he will talk about that process.
Josh, is there a question to the person over there? Are you, is the question related to absentee voting?
Yeah, the question is related to absentee voting. And the, the first part of that question, uh, what was your first part of that question?
Well, just that absentee voting has already started, and must stop at the district office.
Yes, the absentee voting has already started, but you can still certainly do absentee voting at the district office, and I'm gonna turn this over to Josh to describe the process that he, uh, used.
Sure. So if you're unable to come in to vote in person on May 11th, uh, you are able to, uh, do your ballot by absentee. Um, one way obviously would be to contact the district office, and we can send you out the application and the information to do so, or you can stop in the district office and do so as well. Uh, it's not as simple as just coming in and taking a ballot and voting. You have to do the absentee ballot process in the office, fill out the absentee ballot, uh, application, and then you can vote on-site if you'd like to, or take that information home and mail it back in to us. But, uh, anyway, absentee ballots, uh, contact the district office, or stop in the district office, and we can help you out.
Is there a cutoff for absentee voting, cut-off?
I'm sure there is, and there'd be a better que- Monday the day before at 5:00, yep. Uh, in, twenty is rough, a good point two, uh, registered voters, much, uh, quicker process to come through. If you're a non-registered voter, we can still have, you do that, but you have to register to vote in order to do the absentee ballot.
Did everybody hear the cutoff for absentee bat- balloting, or did you need more of that stated? Rebecca, can you, I see you shaking your head.
I was not, I, I was hearing some feedback, so I mean, I know that he was speaking, but I, it, it, it's very, it's muffled. I, I wasn't able to sort of articulate, understand what was being articulated. So I mean, if, if we could get that cutoff date and that process summarized, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. The easiest way is to make sure that they stop in to the district office Monday through Thursday, uh, between 8:00 and, or 3:30 during the day. The cutoff day for voting is, uh, Monday, May 10th.
What if you don't wanna stop in person? Can you call or email when you request a ballot?
Yes, if you don't wanna stop in person, you can call and request a ballot, and a ballot will be sent to you. Does that answer those questions that you guys didn't hear? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If there aren't any, um, I wanna thank everyone for joining us tonight. Um, at this point, we will be continuing on with our regular board presentation, and Bob, do you wanna use this microphone as we go through it and see if that helps?
It probably helps.
Okay.
We, uh, we just wanna take just a five-minute break and, uh-
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute pause here or break, and then, um, we'll make sure we get our microphones out, and, uh, hopefully, they work a little bit better for us moving forward throughout the board meeting.
I'll push it to Jeff's computer.
Yep.
It's gonna be really loud.
Anna, can you hear me okay?
I guess I am on to like to hear you.
Okay, okay.
Don't wanna speak for Anna, I don't know, just that.
Anna, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Anna? Anna, can you hear me now? Are you getting back that? But Rebecca, can you do me a favor to be able to hear me? Anything coming through, Anna? Doesn't look like it. Rebecca, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Bob, Bob's got it in the microphone. See if you can hear him.
Can you hear me as well, Rebecca?
No? Maybe, let's try it this way, and I'll speak again.
Can either one of you hear me this time? See, I'm gonna work to scoot that computer over to Bob when he's talking.
I might just pass my microphone over to Bob. So maybe shut them on.
Well, here.
Hannah and Rebecca, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear that.
Hannah, how about you? Can you hear this? That would be annoying. Can you turn it, man, Jack computer, direct your mouth over? Hannah, can you hear me this time?
Yeah, I, I think that is actually the computer that we just hear, not the microphone.
There's the, I need to touch this, microphone on the left, not the right phone on the right, or have you heard on Zoom? Can you hear me this time?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can.
Okay, Mr. Bensing, are you gonna see us? Not so. We'll move along. Okay, we're back in session. And the next thing on our agenda is reports and communication. I would like to start with our COVID advisory. We don't have them listed, it's one of the more important committees we have at this town, so. Rebecca, are you able to speak to how the COVID committee is right now?
I could, Bob, but I'm just wondering, given the announcement that was shared today, if Jeff would want to speak to that first? Just because that was changed since our meeting on Friday. Well, Jeff, Jeff Moore probably upped it with that.
Yeah, we had our COVID advisory committee meeting on Friday, I think the direction of the conversation was there was worries.
Jeff, I apologize, we lost you, sorry, you might be able to use the computer, sorry.
Is it better?
It is, thank you.
At our last COVID advisory committee meeting, I would say that the general discussion was why there were worries about all the vaccine and everything for Friday. And we left that meeting with a decision to continue with our, uh, uh-
Start starting again. If we went to the city on Friday, and even if it's Saturday, it's going to be a D. Friday, afternoon, with the nursing staff, the pre-pandemic, so, we need to discuss. Where we're at, and what we're doing, I guarantee we're in a public. Uh, who's students would be put into quarantine, uh, with the student spaces being, I guess. And it seems to me that the more students that would be put into quarantine and then having things coming down, uh, yeah, it's like, it's been around, been a nice, well, and this is what we go to always in the streets and on the march for two weeks. And also put six students to be in that classroom and high grade for two weeks. And if it's three, eight, two, five, and then they're not allowed, one, twenty, thirty, eighty, one, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty.
As of today, we have paused for two weeks because of the concerns around the number of cases in that court. And at that point, um, this is kind of where we are at today. We've already discussed it today as well.
Today-
I haven't turned off the mic so it's all delayed. You have to use the computer, as long as that man here can hear, I assume it's-
Yeah, we don't need it out there.
Right, so if we guys are okay with that, this should be normal.
Okay.
A meeting was held today to discuss where we are at with staffing with our current learning model. We feel good still about adding students tomorrow. And then we will have another meeting tomorrow to see where testing is being taken with some of our students and how that affects our different staff as well. So we are currently, honestly dated it at this point.
Has the, um, has the recommendation from CDC and Minnesota Department of Health with part quarantine days and times, have they changed at all recently?
Uh, well, it depends on what we're talking about. If we're talking about, um, just general quarantine for close contact or positive cases, no. If you're talking for activities, uh, that changed a little while back, but we are thinking and reviewing our policy on short quarantine because we're currently talking right now. So it's kind of a loaded question, you start going down that rabbit hole. Yeah, yeah, the question was asked about what have, if there's a change, has there been a change in the current quarantine? I would say no. But we are reviewing what was planned and cannot do with some of the guidance that was had as far as the short quarantine.
How many positive cases do you have right now? It was really confusing when they all having one of them to figure out if they have a big one coming in and another email, or if they-
I would feel more comfortable answering that with Pam on because things have been changing so quickly.
Okay.
Uh, principals, Jennifer, Tim. The question came from Katie blocking about how many positive cases do we have right now? And I know it's different in the elementary than it is in the middle school, high school.
Yeah, that one you're doing will be touched right now, and, uh, I have the document in my mind, so I guess, I would gather where I have positive cases, but I actually do have that.
I will tell you-
I was saying the cross is good.
Okay, so, um, since Thursday, I sent out eight letters stating positive cases. A couple of those have not actually been in the building to impact anybody, most of them have. And there are both eight cases, I think at my last count, were up, were close to 150 students that are quarantined from Thursday through today. And that's, that's both middle school and high school students, but the vast majority of those students are in high school.
By our, we have roughly 25% of our nine through 12 students are in quarantine currently. Right. That's a big number, and that is why we want to get some students learning.
This is a good example of how, you know, a few cases can impact many. When you consider we've had eight positive cases, two of those not even impacting anybody as far as quarantining, have impacted, you know, hundreds of hundreds of students, so.
So Jeff, um, can you comment about how many students are still waiting on test results?
The question is, how many students are still waiting on test results?
Yeah, so, um-
Jeff, Jennifer, do you have that handy?
Yeah, so I think that came from Bill, if I heard correctly.
Yep, yep.
So the hard part about that is, um, parents do not have to tell us whether or not they are testing. And so all that we can say in our phone calls is that it is strongly recommended that the child be tested, but at that point in time, nothing is documented nor disappearance no at that moment if they plan to test. All that we can tell them is that if they do plan to test, a negative or a positive result was very beneficial for the district to know, to help connect the dots. Um, and what I can gather right now, um, since Friday, uh, today alone, I sent out three emails that were covering up for the weekend for the elementary. And, um, one of those situations were not in their contagious period in school because we, and we mean the community, did its job. And, um, that, you know, students who was at home in their contagious period because they followed, um, those quarantine guidelines. And I can't stress that enough, that if we follow that, what I have found for the number of cases that far exceeds the high school right now, if we look at the year, it's so relieving to see when we're about to kind of get something, um, that could be made to know, oh, well, they weren't here for that contagious period. So I can't stress that enough, and I have started to be a little bit more vocal in my communication home because I'm trying to be very clear with parents that we are hanging on right now. And when Jeff says day by day, I can't stress that enough that we almost pulled the plug today. And so, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was known.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I mean, the big piece of this is, is the testing to let us assist you all with some of the contact tracing, to let you identify someone who you've seen this earlier, correct?
Yeah, so when we, uh, send a student or a death ever home that is positive and we go through the close contact quarantine, it is strongly recommended that anyone who is in close contact with symptoms without symptoms. The amount of asymptomatic students we have right now is very high. Um, you know, we have kids that are testing with a running no, a one-day running no that are testing positive. And yes, their entire history of their short life has, that they have allergies around the time. And, you know, it's frustrating for parents to hear like, hey, we really want them to be tested, and then when they finally get tested after being in school for three days, they test positive with that running no. And so, yes, what we need is, we need parents, stay in quarantine, they're not going out and about, they're not playing with a neighbor, and I included that in my emails today. Um, and that if they test, we are strongly recommending that they test and that we find out those results, so.
And not only that, but, you know, uh, what we found was several of the students who tested positive last week in the middle school and high school, um, thought they had allergy symptoms. And we found when they actually went in for testing, it was not allergy symptoms, it was actually for the- So, um, that, you know, I suffer from allergies too, I understand. Um, but, you know, if kids have even a little bit of that, we really would like to keep your kids home because of the impact that we saw this last week. So it's, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, we want to have kids in school, but, you know, we've just got to be really careful about things. From my end, um, you know, I guess if there was a good time for this to happen, I'd rather have it happen now than, you know, in a month when we're really close to graduation. Because I really don't want to have to do this, um, all of this contact tracing and quarantining and have kids miss their graduation ceremony. That is the worst case scenario for me, so.
Yeah, and, and ultimately, that is our goal all over the district, right? Like, we're trying to make sure that our seniors can, can graduate. And when I look at the list right now in quarantine and how many seniors are impacted, um, we are literally, you know, less than three weeks away from this impacting of significant amount of seniors that are, you know, going to be crossing the stage of here, and that is hard.
Do you have any questions or questions for our committee?
Um, as a parent who received a need to quarantine notice today, I just want to thank everybody involved for the very clear expectations and guidelines and how efficient the process was for getting my student home and, um, learning what we're supposed to do next and how to process, um, the states that they need to be at home. And for our teachers that are having to flip their plans at the last minute in the midst of MCA's. Um, it's a lot, and I just want them to know that, that they're appreciated and that we see how hard they're working.
And I think I can speak for Jennifer when I say we really like to thank Pam and the nursing staff because, oh my goodness, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing what she's been able to do, and she's, she's doing a fabulous job. And, um, countless hours at this point, it was, you know, it was wild, we've been prepared.
Yeah, I, I really liked Pam a lot, and typically we spend the Easter together, but we were, you know, having some great time. And I mistakenly found a way to get, uh, a notification every time our document is updated, and that was likely a mistake, and Jeff probably would laugh at me a little bit, but, um, because I have seen firsthand how much Pam is working and how much our nursing staff is working to keep these documents updated. And, um, I am just impressed in how, they're very rare to missing a beat, that, you know, because ultimately, forgetting about a close contact or forgetting to notify a family is a really big deal and puts a lot of other people, you know, and their safety at risk. And so I'm just, I can't express it enough. So I, I thought I'd kind of interview that.
Absolutely fantastic, and the principals have taken a lot as well. Uh, especially over the past few weekends as these cases have increased to go along with the work that Pam and the nurses are doing as well. Uh, the principals have been putting in a lot of time with us. So thank you to everyone that is involved with all of this, especially during a rough time of year, certainly.
Okay, moving on in reports in communication, Preston, are you with us right now? Okay, um, are there any committees that have met and had discussion that a board member would like to fill us in with?
Uh, GCED.
All right, GCED has met and Katie is going to fill us in. Uh, real quick, I don't know if you want to try one of these mics?
Can we try this one?
Yeah, try that one. And remember to enunciate if that helps the people at home.
Is that working?
You gotta figure it out.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, GCED committee met and we talked about, um, they have gotten an online schooling program that is going to be starting next year. Um, it's going to be an option to students in grades K through 12 for all of the GCED member districts. So, um, it's kind of a big deal, but it will be, um, an online forum for students who choose to want to learn that way. Um, and I don't know if there's anything else. There was a video, do you have that video, Jeff?
I, I do have the video. Um, did everybody hear Katie's update through microphone, or is that not working very well?
It muffled.
Probably muffled. Uh, basically, GCED, uh, through cooperation with the rest of the schools within GCED, uh, specifically, Brian Cashman was heading that up, created an online learning platform for next year for all the schools within GCED to send kids to if they wish. And so this has been a great opportunity for our kids if they see that it's good for them moving forward. I do have the video playing or be ready to play here. Uh, it is from Brian Cashman at GCED that describes the online learning platform. And I hope the video works through this. That's what I was afraid of because I'm hearing it come all the way back there. Peter?
Yeah, yeah?
Right now.
When you're sharing your audio, is there a button that says, like, you have to set a separate button to share computer audio?
Okay, is that, can I, can I try this right now?
I learned this one the hard way, because I-
Uh, of course- Well, we may not get to the Brian video. It is on, however, unfortunately, but Brian was the spearhead to this and showed out the application for the state and got us approved. And so the bottom line is, uh, I believe at the GCED board meeting this Thursday, Katie?
Yes, it's the all-county board meeting.
At the all-county board meeting? At the all-county board meeting? Uh, they will be going through this and, um, giving out more information as well on the online learning platform. And it is available to all of our kids. And the good thing about it is, is that it keeps our kids within our school district and doesn't have them travel outside of this area. And so in the long run, we are benefiting from it. And I do apologize for the technical error on that one.
And the all-county meeting is Zoom, available on Zoom. So, does our C P developmentation, you can't send it through Zoom?
Yes, the all-county meeting is available via Zoom.
And at six to seven P M. for newly elected members?
The meeting is on Wednesday, Sharon says, and I believe that she was right, because I'll have my calendar in front of me. It is this Wednesday from six to seven P M. for new members and then seven to eight for all other members. Yep.
Okay, anybody else have anything to share from any committees that have been, uh, that have met since our last board meeting?
Oh, this, uh, Canaples Ed Foundation is looking for new members. So if anyone wants to stand and be a member, we can contact Kathy Banks or just contact information on the website.
Anyone interested in joining the Ed Foundation or being a member, they can contact Kathy Banks, uh, for more information. And we'd love to see, uh, new members on there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving down to administrative reports. And as you can see by your agenda, all of the, uh, administrators have contributed to, uh, to our board agenda. But I'm going to call on each one of them to see if they would like to expound on anything that gets written. Uh, elementary school, Jim, do you have anything to add?
It was kind of a, I'm not entirely familiar with the online board report, so not, I don't remember. And I don't think I have anything to add.
Yeah, you guys can talk about the board conferences. And, uh, again, you're lauding the elementary school teachers, which is very justified for all their hard work during this time. Um, we talk about the class counts and staying within our district class size guidelines.
Yes, thank you very much. This is part of that. Um, yeah, so just looking at the class counts for, um, twenty-one, twenty-two school a year, um, looking in comparison with our district class size guidelines. Um, as it stands right now, it's anticipated with four sections at kindergarten first and second. Um, looking at three sections in third, fourth, and fifth. Given those numbers, I hope it's easy to kind of read there the total number of the class and what that would look like in each of those class rooms. And then, um, just once again, that opportunity for students to earn their real, real biggest, the whole bomber, bomber has, um, had a really nice pandemic. She's gotten really, um, fed well by the students, so probably the largest, biggest dragon ever happened.
I was going to say, it looks to be a little bit harder than it's been to get a student, Jennifer?
Yeah, one of the students in the middle, um, is in purple. So she was the first student last year to hold him. And the first thing out of her mouth the second time a year later, Missy, she has gotten so heavy. What's happening? Anyway, pandemic, I got it.
Was it the pandemic or the bird?
Yeah, yep. It's pretty funny, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Jen. Middle school, high school, technology. Tim, do you have to, you have any, anything to add to your list here?
Well, I guess I started off my board meeting with Jeff, I said, all of our students are back. Now, I just just jumped into that chat. Um, no, you know, uh, things are going fairly well. Uh, I, I'd like to thank Stephen Strauss and the American and, uh, Safran Emerson and Robin Nelson for helping out with the contact tracing and with all the parent contacts we've had to make with that. Um, uh, I think we found out, I think we had a view that contact tracing was going to be really interesting to do at the middle school, high school, and it has certainly lived up to what I thought, uh, we were about that. So, um, no, just, uh, you know, just some highlights. The main thing is, you know, we've got our scholarship and academic awards program coming up, uh, in May. And, um, that will be, uh, virtual via Zoom, uh, like we did last year. Um, and, uh, you know, I've got my fingers crossed that we're going to be able to do a prom on May first.
Question for Tim? Thank you. Community activities report. Reed, what do you have for us?
Reed had to go through a tire factory, so I'm not sure if he's with us.
He discusses in his report just wrapping up the end of the, uh, winter sports season and evals. Spring schedules remain fluid, well, that's full news. Um, still looking for umpires at the lower level. It's been a tough, tough tour, as it always is. And, uh, discussing outdoor spring activities with other H V L A Ds and how they relate to the spectators, vending, bussing, et cetera. Uh, community ed details projected may first release of summer brochure. Uh, will be a flyer and be sent home with the elementary kids plus emailed to parents. That is Reed. Head of operations, is Dave still on? Does he have anything to add to his report?
Yeah, still here, Bob. Um, nothing to really add to the report unless there's any questions about it. Um, I guess the only thing that I would add is, I would, uh, you know, with the ever-changing daily routine that we have going on in the district, I would give a shout out to my custodian staff. These guys are really busting their tails to be able to do everything they can to keep buildings open, keep them clean, keep them functioning. And I just think they, they deserve a, a shout out. Otherwise, uh, unless there's any questions, now you have one.
You look like you're one day down after reaching, uh, retirement, huh?
Yes, sir. Yep, we're down and actively looking.
Good luck with that, it's always hard to get replacements. Thank you. Super detective report, Jeff?
Uh, yes, we've already went through the COVID committee update. And so I just wanted to give an update on the vaccination program. We have moved our vaccination program to the C C C and we have expanded the hours to that to give more flexibility for our community members, uh, that are in town here working in different shifts. And so I'm, I'm pretty proud to say that that seems to be going okay. Uh, we started that move on April ninth, I believe. And I think that transition is going well. So hopefully we can continue to get more of our community members vaccinated.
Questions for Jeff? Okay, thank you. Moving on, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may address, may not address criticism from an individual district employee. Individual complaint should be handled privately with billing administrators. Any, uh, questions or comments? You have up to five minutes to address the board about any particular items pertaining to district function. Okay, moving on. We have no old business. Under new business, we'll begin with the consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty-one revised budget. Josh?
Uh, who do you think might be the best? I can talk into your computer or the microphone or?
Why don't we try to talk into, the microphones don't seem to be working unless you're right in front of the computer.
Sure, I can step back if you consider them.
Sure, that would be fine. I gotta find a way to bring up the slide here in a second. You guys would like to?
Let me go log in. I Zoom, I can just sit on my phone.
David, if you could sit here, I'll step in.
Sure, okay.
Uh, so we'll go through, uh, these numbers a few times now as we already had one revision of the fiscal year twenty-one, uh, budget. And the reason for another one kind of mid-year is going to be one at the very end of the fiscal year is we received a second wave of S R funds, uh, to help offset some COVID-related expenditures. Uh, so what you see here on, uh, your screen is the initial budget for fiscal year twenty-one that was approved, uh, back last June. And, uh, if you'll move the slide down a little bit so I can get to the, see what the picture is. Um, total revenue was less, the initially budget was just under seventeen million dollars. Uh, likewise for expenditures. Um, what we're going to go through is just the big changes from that initial budget until, uh, this current revision that should be about to be approved tonight. Uh, generally, what we talk about is the general fund is that's really where, uh, the bulk of what we do in our district falls. And as you've talked through, um, not only referendum questions today, but some of the financing reasons why we're in the position we're at is, uh, the unassigned fund balance is the general fund. Uh, which really is the flexibility of the district to do things, uh, with its funds. Uh, funds that are tied up will be food service or debt service that are designated for a specific cause or purpose. Uh, likewise designated funds in the general fund, they're tied to a specific purpose. Uh, there's not a lot of flexibility for us, but that's that unassigned fund balance, uh, that helps us make some decisions on a more fluid basis. Uh, when we built the initial budget for fiscal year twenty-one, uh, we had some reductions, uh, as Mr. Simpson talked about earlier in the meeting, about three hundred to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that shows in our initial budget of a difference of three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Part of that was, uh, the reductions and some were just some various offsets throughout the budget process. This is really a, a seventeen-digit code, sixty-four-page document. So it really has fallen down into your basic, um, general realities here. But there's going to be, uh, an addition to our assigned fund balance and get us closer, not to always at eight percent, but we are at about two percent coming in. This would have got us to about four percent unassigned fund balance. Um, when we talk about, uh, having a good fund balance, ours would like to suggest between twelve and sixteen. They want to see two months of, uh, expenditures as a reserve for us. Uh, so this will get us towards that direction. Obviously, there have been a lot of, uh, changes in, uh, both revenues and expenditures this year with, uh, the pandemic and core-related, uh, both expenditures and revenue. Uh, we received the, the second wave of S R funds in our district that is in flux of about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And as we talked with our finance committee, uh, a week or so ago, um, all of our COVID-related expenditures that we've put into the budget this year have seen the increase. Uh, really been, for the most part, offset by those revenues. We've, uh, come out pretty well there. Uh, there has been a little bit of decrease in that, uh, general fund, uh, balance or reserve to three hundred and fifteen thousand is projected currently with this, with this revised budget. Uh, so a lot of, you know, sixty thousand dollar decrease from our initial, uh, projection, uh, but still going to be adding some funds in for our unassigned general fund balance. Uh, of note, uh, there has been two transfers in this, in this revised budget from the general fund to cover, uh, some shortages in food service and community ed. Um, and as I go now down to the next funds, we'll talk about that. In food service, the revenues have been significantly decreased this year as, uh, we are not charging for student lunches. And we are receiving funds from friends to cover, uh, some of those losses. Uh, it doesn't quite cover all of it. It covers a large portion of meals and the service, but not, uh, the labor, sorry, benefit portion of it. Uh, so while you see a, a net zero difference in food service, that is because there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar transfer already built in from the general fund into food service. Uh, in community ed, a little summary of the situation in terms of, um, being able to use some of those S R two dollars to offset some, uh, loss. Uh, we are still mandated to cover essential care workers, um, daycare costs, kids' costs. So there's been a loss of revenue in community service and we're able to transfer, uh, some of those, uh, S R funds to help offset a little bit of that, but not entirely. Uh, community ed, or sorry, the community service fund is allowed to go in deficit, whereas food service is not. So, uh, while we're able to transfer about thirty thousand dollars, uh, of remaining S R two funds into community ed, uh, we're not able to cover all of the, the, uh, loss in community ed. Uh, in the fiscal year twenty-two budget, when we get to present that, either in the April twenty-sixth meeting or the first, uh, morning, board meeting of May, uh, there is another, a third wave of S R funds coming and that should be about six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars towards our district. And as we build that budget, we'll be able to, uh, go back and cover some of those losses in community ed, uh, but also cover some of the expenses that we know we're going to have going forward for COVID-related, uh, items in the next fiscal year. Uh, as I kind of go down and hit the next funds, debt service. Uh, while there is a significant, uh, loss, so to speak, in debt service, uh, that is because as a levy rule, uh, we collect one hundred and five percent of the, uh, debt service levy. And, uh, our county is historically very good at, uh, people paying their taxes. And when we build up a debt service excess, uh, there's a reduction for our debt service and that helps to offset some of the burden to our taxpayers. Uh, but that fund is set to, uh, pay our obligations on our bonds. Uh, trust agency is our scholarship fund. Uh, the reasoning for the larger expense than maybe normal in our trust agency is we've gone to now a more of a, uh, just-in-time, so to speak, payment of our scholarships. We receive the scholarship funds from the donors and they'll pay it out. Uh, there'll be no delay, uh, for the scholarship receipt. They won't need to wait, uh, two and three and four years to receive their entire scholarship. As they, uh, award their scholarship, uh, during, uh, graduation time, uh, they'll receive the scholarship. So, um, that again is set to pay the obligation. The last two funds are the O P E B trust, uh, fund and the O P E B, uh, debt service fund. And, uh, that was a ten-year, uh, bond that we had. And the last year of service was fiscal year twenty, so those have been washed out. Uh, they just show as there's been some cleanup, as we receive some of that delinquent tax that comes in. That's what you see in the revenue for the O P E B debt service. Uh, all in all, again, it really comes back to the, the general fund and where we're at on there. And, uh, while there have been, as I did the last update of our COVID-related expenditure revenue sheet, uh, although there's been about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of additional expenditures to our district for COVID-related items, uh, we've had most of that offset by revenues from both the gears, S R, and then the cares package. So, uh, all in all, things considered, while it's not where we anticipated coming into with the initial budget for fiscal year twenty-one, uh, we will be, still be able to put some funds into our unassigned fund balance, uh, at the close of fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, this will be updated one more time just at the very end of the fiscal year, just so we can tie all things out and that will be a very quick, uh, presentation. But, uh, if there are any questions on this, uh, we can certainly do our best to, to answer. And as I said, this has all gone through finance committee as well.
The, the question I have, I guess, is on those S R funds. They've been earmarked for us, have we received them? Did you, already?
Yep. So, uh, the question being is, have we received all the S R funds? Uh, all of S R one we've received. Uh, S R two, the dollar amounts were just released and that's why we're doing this revised budget now for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, the application is, uh, they've just released those items. So we'll be filling out the application to receive those funds. And as soon as they're made available to us, we will, um, pull those funds from, uh, the state of Minnesota into our district. So, uh, it's just a matter of, uh, having the application approved, which is more boilerplate as they're doing off of the S R one application. Um, but as soon as they're available to us, then we will draw them, so it will be offset and made whole.
Are there any other questions for Josh?
Uh, if you do come up with something you need, uh, clarification, I think, feel free to call a district officer or email me.
Oh.
Yeah, unplugged, I think.
Yeah, hang on.
Are we back?
Yes, we're back.
Okay, we need to approve the revised budget. Uh, at first, we need a motion to approve as shown.
How much is the budget? Revised budget?
Story of my life. Can you hear me better now?
I can, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the revised twenty-one budget.
I made a motion to approve the revised budget.
And Brenda has gave, given us that motion. And Bill has seconded that motion. So roll call vote, a yes vote would be to accept the revised budget as shown. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Next, Dr. Consideration to Approve the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Chromebook Purchase.
Thank you, I will take this one. Um, with technology being in short supply right now, um, we are looking at getting the approval of our next year's uh purchase ahead of time right now to make sure that we are able to get in line to get technology uh available to us so that we have it here and ready to go by the beginning of the school year. This would be similar to do with what we, or what we do with the buses at this point. Uh, this would be giving the approval right now to go ahead and move forward with the purchasing of this allotment of Chromebooks moving forward.
I would look for a motion to approve the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Chromebook Purchase. Anyone wish to make that motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Rebecca? On the motion. Seconded?
I'll second, this is Anna.
Anna on the second. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question about that.
Yep.
So is this for all of high school or replacements or new or?
Uh, new machines? Tim, do you have an answer for if this is just for high school or if this is all new? Do you know which grade level they're going to?
Uh, this is a pretty big um replacement and I believe that it's going to be in both buildings. Um, I think we're looking at three or sixteen Chromebooks um to replace. So uh, you know, generally that's right around four grade levels. Um, and honestly, I can't remember where all of them are going to be placed. Majority of them are in middle school, high school, um, and some of the elementary as well. The elementary school, uh, at the newest, um, the Chromebooks that we purchased last summer, uh, went to the elementary school to replace some of those. So we were replacing a stuff that is on their fourth year, um, which uh they're, they're in dire need at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Did that answer? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? So a yes vote would be to approve the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Chromebook Purchases. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
S.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to Approve the Ten Cent Meal Increase for the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two School Year.
This is a uh every-year item that we do. Um, with us not knowing what the future holds as far as lunch prices, uh, we need to approve what our lunch price will be for next year. And I recommend that we approve the ten cent increase for meal price, uh, production per increase for the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two School Year.
I would look for a motion to approve this ten cent increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
And Bill on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the ten cent meal increase. Rebecca?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
What are the current, what are the current lunch prices? Just for information.
Lori?
Lori, are you on here?
I believe we have a four hundred one or way, say?
I am, I'm here. Um, hold on one second. I'm trying to. Well. Um, first is one ninety and lunch is two eighty at the high school, two seventy at the elementary. Thank you.
We have a motion to the second on the floor to increase the meal prices by ten cents. The yes vote would be to, okay?
I have another question, sorry. So the, the ten, just to clarify, the ten cent increase, is that consistent with previous year's increases for the, 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 the meal could be?
Yes, that is correct.
This is. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sure. Motion in the second on the floor, a yes vote would be to increase the meal prices for the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two School Year. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to Approve the Updated Twenty-Two One Spring Coaches.
I believe Mr. Olson is back on here and if there's anything that you want to add to this read, do you want to give an update?
Yeah, I believe they're, they're all for goal, but um, not just they have, they have one reservation and a replacement there and the remainder are all volunteered, uh, so that helps us as we use both Summit and Cucanet, just provides uh additional coverage at both of the zones.
Any questions for Reed? If not, look for a motion to approve the Updated Twenty-Two One Spring Coach List.
I'll make a motion, Chris.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Uh, you got, you got beat by Bill. So we have a motion and a second on the floor for the Updated Spring Coaches list for approval. A yes vote would be for approval. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Okay. Consideration to Approve a One Point Oh FTE Special Ed Position for the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two School Year. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, and speaking with our uh special ed coordinator, we are in need of an additional special ed position in the elementary for this upcoming school year. Uh, part of these funds will come from federal dollars, so it will not be fully funded through the district. And I do uh recommend that we do approve this position for this coming year.
Okay. Consideration to Add a One Point Oh FTE Special Ed Position. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, this is Anna.
Anna on the motion. Katie on the second. Other discussion?
Jeff, you mentioned fed dollars, is it fully funded?
Two-thirds. It's two-thirds funded.
Okay. Rough, uh, sixty-four percent.
Yeah, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Did everyone hear that question?
Oh, was it about how much of this is funded by the federal government? Okay.
Yeah, and it's roughly sixty, forty. If I had a two-thirds.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. A yes vote would be for the approval of the special ed position for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to Approve a One Point Oh Third Grade Teaching Contract for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two.
Yes, and the name that is given here is Marissa Flavin for that position. Recommend hiring.
Okay, like a motion to approve this hire.
I'll make a motion, Chris.
Motion by Katie. Second?
I'll second it, Bob.
Bill, we'll second. So we have a motion to second on the floor for the approval of Marissa Flavin to be our third grade teacher for the Twenty-One, Twenty-Two year. Any other discussion?
Is this a replacement uh of an open position or a decision?
Jennifer on here? Jennifer? Uh, due to people retiring, uh, we've had people shuffling around and so this is one of the positions that came open. And without, I guess, having this question ahead of time, I guess I was hoping Jennifer would uh be able to answer that, but it's due to people moving around, we'll leave it at that.
Okay. So I guess, because we've got a couple on here and I know the, the elementary report that was talking about class sizes, um, so we are, and that people would be moving around. So we are still hiring specifically for grade level, um, and that won't change.
Yes. I think.
We know there's a third grade opening, so we're filling in third grade spots. And if, with this, when this is filled, this person is going to be asked to go to first grade or fifth grade or next, the next school year.
No, there's a process that teachers have to, if you have a left opening later, so if a, if a position would open up in a fifth grade, they'd have to control our plans from there and there.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Steven. I can't hear you. Um, and yeah, I think some of these positions here are just because of internal transfers. Like you mentioned, that, that should be offered internally first and those are, some of these positions are for, um, each spring in elementary there's kind of some movement around based on internal transfers. So that's create some openings and based on that and the hiring.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this contract for the third grade teacher. A yes vote would be for approval. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Bob?
Yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to Approve a One Point Oh FTE First Grade Long-Term Sub Teaching Contract for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two.
Uh, the name here is Angela Rosendahl. I recommend approval.
Okay, would anyone like to approve this hire?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion, do we hear a second?
I'll second, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. We have a motion, the second, any other discussion?
Is there a reason this is a long-term sub and not a FTE?
Yeah, we're just going to ask, is this to replace a leave of absence or?
This is to replace a retiring teacher in the middle of the year for this coming year.
Oh.
So it has to be a long-term sub.
Okay. We have a.
Ken, sorry, just to, you kind of cut it in and out, Jeff. Would I, just what I urge you say is to replace somebody who's retiring?
Yes, and here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. A yes vote would be for the approval of the long-term subcontract for the first grade. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie?
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Moving along, consideration to approve a One Point Oh FTE Fourth Grade Teaching Contract for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two.
The name here is Rachel Ford. Recommend approval.
I would look for a motion to approve.
I am voting for Katie.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second, this is Anna.
Anna on the second. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be for the approval of the fourth grade teaching contract. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie?
Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to Approve a One Point Oh Media Specialist Teaching Contract for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two.
This one name is Brandon Otte. I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brandon, what's Brandon's last name, Otte?
Otte, O-T-T-E.
Yep. And Brenda made the motion to approve. And do I hear a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
Jeff, is this the position being added back in through the full-time media specialist?
This is the elementary.
Oh, this is the elementary?
This is the elementary position.
Okay, so that's replacing?
It is replacing that position.
Okay.
Yep, that's retiring.
Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the media specialist. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie? Anna?
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Bob?
Yes. That passes by a six zero. Consideration to Approve the One Point Oh FTE Middle School, High School, Fied Long-Term Sub Teaching Contract.
Uh, the name for this position is Rocky Jong and I recommend approval.
So do I hear a motion to approve this long-term PE sub? I'll move here for. Motion by Bill. Second?
Okay.
Katie on the second. Other discussion?
Is this for a leave of absence?
The question is, was this for a leave of absence by Brenda? And yes, this is the one that's continuing into next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. A yes would be to approve this contract. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Okay, consideration to approve the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract at the close of this school year.
The name here is Sydney McNamara as a long-term substitute uh for this, for this current school year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion by Brenda? Second? Second? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Further discussion? Okay, we have a resolution here, it looks like, huh?
Do you want me to go over the narrative here?
Yeah, probably so.
Yeah, I can move out of the way.
Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Sydney McAmara, a probationary teacher. Whereas Sydney McAmara is a probationary teacher in the Independent School District Number 252. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot four zero subdivision five that the teaching contract of Sydney McAmara, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2020-2021 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice will be sent to the said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form: Notice of Termination and Nonrenewal. So roll call. Rebecca?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Should it read that she's being terminated from a long-term sub-contract?
Just a probationary teacher.
Right. The question is, should it be, should it read that she's being terminated from a long-term subbing contract? Lori, when you talked to MSBA about this, did they say to go ahead and use their form on their website to clarify?
It does not need to be stated that it's a long-term subposition.
Okay. Okay. I wonder if Rebecca was looking like maybe she didn't hear the whole thing or?
The clarification here is the wrong language. So we're just really trying to specify that this has to do with Rebecca's long-term sub-contract, correct?
Yes, that was the question.
So any other discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Katie, yeah.
That passes by a six-zero vote. We are finishing with our agenda for the evening. I'd like to thank everybody for their patience in this because it's been quite an unusual meeting, if you will. Shuffling tables, shuffling desks, trying to do our best to get this all accomplished in the evening. So I appreciate your indulgence in all of this. And if anybody has anything in closing they'd like to state, do so now. Otherwise, we will be closing our meeting.